Good evening. I'd like to call the Thursday, December 8th, 2022. Another plan and board meeting to order. Time is 7:02. First item on the agenda, Citizens Forum Call for Public Common. Anyone in the audience here for anything other than what's on the agenda? Anyone online? Seeing as none, moving on. A and Rs, we have one for 28 Main Street. Is there anyone online for 28 Main Street or here?
Scott?
Yes, my name is Jeff Stefanic. I'm a Lancive with Gary and Helmon. Asking for endorsement for an A and R at 28 Main Street. This is two existing lots where the lot line is being adjusted, with the existing house getting basically one acre and the rest of the land going into the state agricultural preservation program. So the land will all be preserved. So we're asking for endorsement for the boundary line adjustment to make that happen tonight.
Mr. Benoit, any comment on this?
No, Mr. Chair. I reviewed this, made sure that it meets the three criteria. The board's here to review this evening. They both parcels have adequate frontage, lot size, and are on a passable road on Main Street Route 16.
Okay. Board, any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R plan for 28 Main Street.
Motion made by Ms. Sharkey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Greco. Any further comment? All those in favor?
Ernie Marks, aye.
Aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Meg Schlesman, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Sokrath, aye.
Tracy Sharkey, aye.
A and R is all set. And just backtracking, attendance, we have everyone here. Just with Ms. Sharkey online.
Yes.
Public hearings, none.
Jeff, the plan will be ready for pickup tomorrow morning.
Great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Take care.
Okay, moving along. He's been pretty much the right order you want to take him. Okay. Next up, 123 Galboa. Site plan modification request, possible votes.
Good evening. Cogway Field Associates.
What are you doing, Tom?
CRG. Recently sent in a letter to Mr. Benoit and was in front of the Conservation Commission earlier this week to talk about this. Really, what's going on out there? Haven't seen it, haven't done work. We're at work phase of the project. They think they told me 346,000 yards is what they've moved since they started out there. An impressive amount in a short period of time. In doing that, what we found is we started to find isolated little pockets of what we term unsuitable materials. They're tailings from normal operations with excess, all those excess organic materials in them. You would think that after 75 to 100 test pits and bore rings and things like that, we would have found all those pockets. Nope, we didn't. Long and the short of it is that in reality, when you have a pit like that that's been operated for a significant period of time, you find these things. It's typical. It's nothing unusual. We're just trying to figure out what to do with it. What we found to date, we know what we're going to do with it. We're basically going to take some of those materials, put them on some of the non-structural slopes, the surrounding coroner areas, cover them up with about a foot of topsoil, and then do our surface planting on it, whether it's grass, whether it's trees, from whatever we had originally called for. So we can accommodate all that. The concern that the earthwork contractors are having is that we almost used up all those areas with what we found. We don't know if we're going to find anymore. But in the event we do, with the amount of earthwork they're moving and the speed with which they're doing it, they want a contingency plan. So the contingency plan is we selected another area on the site that was outside of our original footprint that likely has pretty good soil in there that we'd be able to use for gravel, structural fill. And we want to mine that, put the unsuitable back there if we need to, and then recover, restore, replant the trees. The whole reason we're trying to do this is we don't want to truck these unsuitables off site. We don't want to import fresh material. We spent a lot of time telling this board and the Conservation Commission to balance site. And we want to maintain that because that would be, you know, there'd be a lot of trucks that we don't really import out there. That's the real purpose for this. In the materials, in the cover letter, we've committed to not only restoring any area that we disturbed, but we'll replant the trees at a rate of 125% of what we take out with similar species. So if we do have to go in there, we'll have somebody catalog, all right, four-way pines, six hemlocks, whatever it is that we're taking out. And we'll put it back. And again, I just want to add a second. This is a contingency plan. We may not win our honor. We may lose a little bit of it. But we just want to have that in our pocket as a tool to use in the event that we need it, so those guys don't have to slow down.
So through the chair, so you're trying not to break your process. You want to be able to move along. We'd like you to move along, or at least I would.
Well, yeah. If you've been by there or taken a peek in there, the amount of iron they've got on that site right now is impressive. They've got one excavator that's got a 22-yard bug on it, which is huge. You don't see those every day.
No.
You don't see them much.
I see no problems.
I don't either.
I'm glad it's being proactive instead of reactive.
Right.
It's a big enough project with a lot of different things going on. I'm trying to stay ahead of everything and anticipate.
I think it's important to keep things on the site if you can. I think that's admirable.
Agreed.
Yeah. How do we move this, Matt?
What's the replanting and all that? We call a minor change.
Yeah, through the chair. So I don't have issues with this either. Our minor site plan criteria doesn't really address anything like this. It talks about alteration in gross floor area structures and the generation of parking spaces to consider these things minor. So I think, given the scale of this entire project versus what's being talked about, this is very much informative. I agree. So I think what we'd be looking for here is a motion to approve the contingency plan, provided that any modifications moving forward are added to an ASB plan when the project's concluded.
What you said. Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Is that a motion from you, Mr. Sokrath?
Yes, it would be a motion to support this contingency plan.
Minor change.
Minor change in this contingency plan as presented, and that's pretty much it.
Any changes be added to an ASB?
Yeah, on site. And we'd like to balance site and keep everything there and move things around as you may. That kind of thing, so that's.
And any changes would be on the ASB and whatever.
Right. Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right. So motion made by Mr. Sokrath, second by Mr. Greco. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, roll call vote.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Meg Schlesman, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Sokrath, aye.
Tracy Sharkey, aye.
Thank you all very much.
And how are you making out on the temperature that?
Yeah, it looks like we ought to do that. So they're working on the fabrication of that now. And as well as sound techniques, they're working on the fabrication of permanent reach components. So hopefully, within the next month or so, you'll actually see something out there as far as above my concern.
Awesome.
Wow.
Thank you.
Have a good Christmas.
Ah, you too.
Next on the agenda, 470 Northeast Main Street bond release in 53G closeout, possible votes.
Tom McIntyre for KTKT and McIntyre Land.
How you doing, Tom? Doing well. Talk to us. What's going on?
Yep. There are two earth removal permits that are on the site. This is the same site that Mr. Morgan was just talking about as well. We had Rosenfeld concrete before us, and we had earth removal permits on the site. Different areas. Obviously, now that the warehouse has been approved, that we're just looking to close out. Get rid of the bond and 53G account as well, just close out anything. So the only thing that's a little out of the order I'm asking for is to waive any requirement as to an ASB. The reason being, kind of what he just said, 375,000 yards that move.
Change in hourly.
Where do you start?
So with respect to what's sort of down.
So are you here for 466, too, or someone else here for that?
That's someone.
Okay, all right. Try to wrap them in the same thing, but.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. Benoit?
Mr. Chairman, we have two earth removal permits, ER-000222 and Earth Removal ER-210421. As Mr. McIntyre stated, there's no reason for us to expect an ASB plan for continuously changing site that's going to become a building. Then the bond amount, sorry, my recommendation is to close out both of those earth removal permits and to release the bond in the amount of, that is currently in the amount of $100,000. And, excuse me, $100,890.
Is it one bond for the two?
Yes, it was a combined bond. And then there will be a second motion after that for the other one, so. Do that.
Chairman, I'll still move that motion, that bond release.
And I'll second that.
Motion made by Ms. Sharkey, second by Mr. Zwicker. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
With no ASB.
With no ASB.
The motion was to release the bond.
Uh, closed.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Meg Schlesman, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Sokrath, aye.
Tracy Sharkey, aye.
Mr. Chairman, a follow-up motion that there's approximately $3,500 being held in a 53G account associated with these earth removal permits. We'd ask for the board to consider, well, returning that money back to Mr. McIntyre.
I'll second that.
I'll make that motion. So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, second by Ms. Sharkey. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Meg Schlesman, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Sokrath, aye.
Tracy Sharkey, aye.
Awesome. Have a good night.
Good luck with everything.
Take care.
Okay. Moving along, similar topic. 466 Northeast Main Street, Upton Site Remediation Closeout, possible votes. So we have someone for there.
Eugene. Muted there for a second. Yes, I'm Gene Bernard from Cover Technologies. And I think Bruce Haskell is on as well, my engineer.
I am. Thank you, Gene.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, actually. Gene, would you like to just introduce kind of the site walk that we had the other day?
Yeah, so your site review, independent site review came out, did a site walk with us, verified that the slopes had been stabilized and wrote a letter to that effect that they were permanently stabilized. Noted the differences in the grading of the final grades of the plan, but also noted that the grading was consistent with the original plan submitted, with all drainage going towards the drainage basin and the basin being permanently stabilized as well. And also, I think the previous review showed that the basin was approximately double the size of the original basin that was proposed. So there's more than adequate stormwater storage on the site and that the site is basically at a permanent grade at this point as far as our work is considered, until the owner comes up with some other use other than the log yard. I think the independent review also noted that the way it was graded is more conducive to the current use and permanent use as, you know, as an industrial or commercial property.
All right. So, Mr. Chairman, what we have before us is a request to, excuse me, ASB plan submitted, and our peer review consultant has deemed the work to be sufficient. We're looking at a request to close out this earth permit. I'm sorry, I don't have the earth permit number on this. But the earth permit associated with 466 Northeast Main Street in Douglas and to release the $50,000 tripartite agreement associated with the permit.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Sharkey, second by Mr. Zwicker. Any further discussion?
Through the chair, can I just ask? The letter from Jeff Walsh is referencing Northwest Main Street, but I believe this is Northeast Main Street.
You're correct.
With that, has the debris been cleared out?
Oh, so that's the second thing we'll take after the motion.
Okay.
That's a separate issue.
All right.
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Meg Schlesman, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Sokrath, aye.
Tracy Sharkey, aye.
So through the chair to Ms. Schlesman, who brought up a great question. So while we were on site, we noticed that the current operation there has encroached into the storm basin a little bit, okay? There's a bunch of law, this is a logging site. It's a very active logging site where they transport timber from A to B. And we'll see in your packet, there's a photo that show that the basin is not currently kept free of debris. The reason we don't want to tie these two together is because we want to make sure that Upton Site Remediation, their project's finally closed out. But what I would recommend is that we send a letter to the property owner explaining what they should be doing and to make sure that they keep the debris kept free of the storm water system moving forward.
Is enforcement of that through us, through the building inspector, who ultimately would be responsible for keeping up with that?
Yeah, it'd be the building commissioner for enforcement. I just think it'd be, hold a little extra weight if the board took a motion to send a letter.
Okay, we should. I will entertain a motion to address the concerns in the letter made by Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Chair, oops.
Yes, please. We lost you halfway through that.
She's so moved. She said so moved.
So moved, okay.
Are you hearing me?
Yeah, there you are.
Now we can.
So moved on the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made by Ms. Sharkey, second by Mr. Zwicker. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, roll call vote.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Meg Schlesman, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Sokrath, aye.
Tracy Sharkey, aye.
Should be all set, Gene. Any other questions?
No, that's great. Thanks very much. I guess I just need to connect with you to town council for the release of the bond.
Yes, sir.
Because the letter has to go to the Westfield Savings Bank.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thanks so much, Matt, and happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Whitein Heights Bond Reduction Request, possible votes.
He didn't make it here. Okay. Mr. Chairman, we had, okay, let me start from the beginning here. Whitein Heights has put the top course down on their subdivision roadway. And they're asking for a release of, a partial release of the bond for the work that's been done. So we hired, or at least stuck with Leonard Engineering, who's been overseeing this project since inception. But we asked them to do a review of their bond reduction estimate. And that letter just came in today. So I had a chance to read it, and it seems that they are satisfied with the calculations that were provided. So looking at a reduction, I might have to do some math here. Overall, it's.
65,413,05.
Yeah, they're saying, that's correct. $65,413.05 can go back to the developer, with the total bond remaining at $23,798.02. I usually recommend to boards to make that a nice round number. But it's completely up to you. If you wanted to make that a $24,000, I would not be upset with that.
And that 2 cents makes all the difference. Make the bond reduce to 465,413. Let's do that.
It's in writing already, so.
Mr. Chair, do you want to hear a motion?
Yeah, I know the numbers. We're just trying to maybe get a round, even number here, Tracy, for one second.
Yeah. The bond amount of $24,000 for Whitein's Heights.
Motion to release the numbers to get it to 24?
Hold on one second.
Maybe, hold on.
Yeah, hold on.
One second. Almost there. Okay. So we're looking for a motion to reduce the bond of $89,211.07 by $65,211.07 to a remaining total of $24,000.
Mr. Chair.
So moved.
And I'll second that.
All right. Motion made by Ms. Sharkey, second by Mr. Zwicker. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Meg Schlesman, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Sokrath, aye.
All right, next up, Earth Removal 200827 Pine Sand and Stone, St. Dennis Cemetery, withdrawn. 53G closeout per request of applicant, possible votes.
So what we have is a handful, so about $1,951.36 that are hanging out in respective accounts for a project that was withdrawn. Our motion this evening is to return those funds to their source. I think that's as simple as I can say this.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, so moved on that motion to return the funds.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Sharkey, second by Mr. Marks. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, roll call vote, please.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Meg Schlesman, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Sokrath, aye.
Tracy Sharkey, aye.
We'll sit on that.
All right. Yes, if it's okay with you, I'd like to take something out of order.
That is fine.
All right, we have update on, there's a bond reduction request in Sleepy Hollow.
Okay. Skipping a few going on through ongoing development. A, Sleepy Hollow, definitive, dash, 160316, bond reduction request, possible votes.
One second.
How do we have time there?
I want to make sure this one made it into my folder here. There it is. Okay. So, sorry, this one almost escaped me because it came in a day after our meeting, our last meeting. So what we had was, well, if you'd like to add any to this at all.
I'm totally unprepared.
Okay. So a lot of the roadwork was done, getting closer to the end of the year. And the reduction was for a 35% reduction of the overall bond that currently exists. We had this reviewed by Leonard Engineering, and they are satisfied with the numbers provided. They're looking for that the bond be reduced 35%.
An even number?
Uh, it is not.
Reduced by what, $105,000?
35.00.
Let's just say there's change involved, so hold on a second.
Or just leave it the way it is to keep it simple? It's already written.
I think I can get it. Hold on one second. I think I can get it.
What's good for the last boost is good for the gap.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to reduce the bond amount to the previously stated amount by Mr. Benoit.
This would be reduced by.
We don't have it yet.
Yeah, I'm getting there. It's, and then reduced by $104,034.51 to a total remaining of $200,000.
Correct.
Fine with you?
Yeah, that's fine. I'll second that.
Motion made by Ms. Sharkey, second by Mr. Zwicker. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Meg Schlesman, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Sokrath, aye.
Tracy Sharkey, aye.
Wasn't sure if that's the one you were waiting for.
Have a good holiday.
Thank you.
See you, Eddie.
All right. Going back towards the top.
We're at the.
A accessory apartment extension, 31 Royal Crest Drive. Mr. Benoit, are all three of these in order?
They are. In my opinion, my opinion, Mr. Chairman, yes. I would even entertain a board's motion to approve all three. As one motion, you're talking 7 Mechanic Street, 31 Royal Crest Drive, and 112 Maple Street for extensions.
Through the chair, I'll so move.
Go ahead, Aaron. Motion made by Mrs. Zwicker, second by Mr. Marks. Any further discussion? Okay, so that's a motion for 31 Royal Crest Drive, 7 Mechanic Street, and 1 called Maple Street, accessory apartment extension. Roll call vote, please.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Meg Schlesman, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Sokrath, aye.
What is this next? Did you, is it updated?
The one that got, we passed over it. Earth removal by law discussion.
Okay. I am going to do my best to keep this as short and sweet as I can.
Try to start on it, at least.
Yeah, so I think what I'm trying to do here is what I provided us is a copy of what went to town meeting. And I also provided the first draft that I put together that I sent to town council. It's a modification of the actual zoning bylaw and not the general bylaw. So you should have two copies here.
So which one went to town meeting?
The one that is addressed to Kevin Moore since September 9th went to town meeting as a general bylaw. The one that has some, I don't know if yours are in color or not, so I'm not sure. But Section 6 with some track changes throughout. So I'm not, I'm not saying we should, actually, I don't think we should try to knock this out today. I really just wanted to provide this to all of you this evening so we could start the process collectively. Even consider it almost as homework to bring feedback to the next meeting. I'd love to hear your thoughts on what we can and can't do. There's more needed to go into the Section 6 change because we tried to add a fill component to it also. And there's more that I need to do to add to fill.
But as I recall through the meeting with town council, you go sometimes you better off leaving the two separate.
Right.
Instead of combining it into this. And I think we should follow that advice. It makes sense. Keep one removal as removal, keep fill as fill. So that somebody comes in, it's not, I would say, diluted between the two. Where, okay, what's really being said and what's not being said because you're in a gray area. So if you're going to do, or thinking of something like that, I would think you want to keep them definitely separate, which would make, I know, a new chapter, but it is what it is.
Yeah. If I could, Mr. Chair, the other thing is residential developments that are associated with earth removal. There needs to be a definition or a section that addresses if you're applying for an earth removal permit and you have a planned subdivision in the future, that should be addressed within there so you're not restoring before you have to build the houses.
That's a good point.
Yeah, because through the chairs, because you're doing the work twice, which adds more cost. If the original plan is to eventually have houses, and, I mean, somebody had to keep restored because of dust control and everything else. But when you know the dirt's going to be removed anyways, it should all be done to one shot and not keep going around in circles because everybody then gets confused and really upset.
Address that.
Yeah, so, and that's really what I wanted to do, is get this in front of us like it's, like it was for me when I had to kind of scramble to do this for town meeting. Now you guys are seeing what I saw to start so we can all collectively hit it at the same time.
So through the chair to Mr. Benoit. So I guess the board is maybe looking for two separate ones. One is the fill and one is the removal.
Presuming you also would want me to do that as a zoning bylaw, correct?
It remains a zoning bylaw.
Yeah, it remains.
That is the, that is the vibe I caught.
If we're doing this exactly, do it together.[1796.02] So when it goes to town meeting, you're doing both the earth removal and the fill at the same time. So the residents of the town know, okay, we're working on both sides of it. For the fill side and the removal side. So we're not throwing it out there at one meeting, and back at another meeting, and at another meeting. Everybody's gonna go, what are you doing?
And address the residential portion of it.
Yeah.
Right, so you have it all up in one package. So everybody can see it and understand it and be done with it.
But from Tracy's, through the Chair, from Tracy's perspective too, is that with Sleepy Hollow, they came in for the earth removal and the development at the same time, and we handled them as two different projects. If that earthly removal had been done all at once, then there wouldn't have been that second phase, and it wouldn't have been all the commotion that was on it a month or so ago, or two months ago at our meeting. But I think that's the first time in all the years that I've been on the board that that actually came in for earth removal and residential development at the same time. So whether we handle it the right way or not, I don't know, but I think it's something we should consider in the future that, so this doesn't happen again. That they come in and do an earth removal, and everybody thinks they're done doing earth removal, and now they're doing another earth removal, almost on the same scale for residential development, where they could have done it all at once and then done the residential development.
And through the Chair, I agree, if I recall, we had Town Council and everything, or whatever, a meeting, and where there was no building permits or anything at that time, we couldn't combine them. There had to be an earth removal project with a general layout, and then, once they knew what the houses and everything they were gonna do, they were gonna have to come back. We saw it, we knew it, knew what was gonna happen, but we couldn't proceed that way by the way the bylaw was personally written. It wouldn't be allowed.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Maybe we should look into how we can handle it that way in the future, so that we don't do two, two earth removals if we can do just one. Perhaps people only upset once instead of twice.
Yeah, receptive to all those ideas.
Homework. Are you looking to have it for spring?
Just want to keep this on our agenda rolling. If we're not ready for spring, we're not ready for spring. We want to make sure it's, it's, it's the way we want it.
Yeah. Do we want to keep talking about it then every meeting?
I think it's a good idea to carry it each meeting.
See if we can get it to spring.
And then, will I have public hearing on it?
Yeah, we would have to.
If it's gonna be meaning zoning bylaw, it would have to be a public hearing.
That way that we get community input on.
And hopefully people come.
Right, if anybody comes.
Yeah. It's funny, you go to a town meeting and everyone has comments, but we have a public meeting here that drafted, and no one comes. So hopefully people come.
Through the Chair, thank you, Matt, good job.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
No problem.
Moving along, FEMA flood maps bylaws, discussion.
Before, if I can, through the Chair, before we go through this one, do you need, you're gonna get all the Town Council to find out about the fill side?
Absolutely.
What we need to, okay. So we get information.
So, this one fell in my lap a little bit. I was contacted by a representative of FEMA stating that all municipalities in the non-coastal Quinabon watershed have to adopt some changes into their zoning bylaws at spring town meeting. So unlike the one we just talked about, what we work on here has to go to the warrant. So, there's some, I'm gonna try to gloss over this, but I'm gonna do a lot of the legwork here. I'm just introducing it to us now.
I'm just shocked that we're in the Quinabon water.
Yeah, yes, we, we made it.
I thought we never went to Blackstone, then south into Connecticut, but...
So I have to, I have to analyze this. There's going to be changes to two things. It's going to be changes to our zoning bylaws, and it's also going to introduce changes to our subdivision regulations, which don't need town meeting vote, but that is a, another item. There's some updated definitions, some need to be removed, some need to be modified, but ultimately, this is something I, that, 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 we can't look over this. This has to happen at spring town meeting, so I'm introducing it now. It's wonderful reading material.
Wonderful reading.
For us to take over Christmas break.
What do we have to change, you know, off the bat?
The one that really stands out is the definitions, the ones that we have to pull and the ones that we have to include. And certain languages citing like health and safety welfare reasons for adoption, but it's, without getting too far into it, it's something I will have better prepared for our next meeting, but I just want to introduce the guidelines to you all this evening.
Are they pretty much giving you the language that it needs to be?
Somewhat, yes, yes. And I just need to...
Sorry. So that's what I say, is there a sample bylaw that we can review that has been adopted by other towns?
No, there is not yet.
So is CMRPC working with towns to meet the regulation?
Ooh, that's actually a very good question. We might be able to apply for technical assistance for this.
Yeah.
Oh, good catch.
Be a blanket bylaw that would need to, the bare minimum to meet the regulation, and that's what I would want to adopt for Douglas.
Yep, I agree.
Concur with that. But we say at time with CMRPC, right? This would be a perfect thing, especially if there's other towns involved in the area too.
I think so.
They might be working on a boilerplate for other towns at the same time.
Because if we're in that watershed, then there's a lot of other towns in that, because we are far away from that river.
I know we are.
That's a very good question. I'll take that under advisement.
All right.
Perfect.
Any other comments on FEMA flood maps? Okay, moving along, K modification to subdivision regulations.
So these aren't, these are not in your packet this evening? Reason being is because I want to make sure that everyone has their copies of their own subdivision regulations first. Does everyone have those, or does anyone need those?
I'll need a new copy.
I'll need a copy.
One, two.
Bring it to everybody.
I will need a new, well, Mister Benoit.
That's four so far.
I'm out of my truck, I can go get it.
So, I just want to, heads up. Bring yours next meeting if you need one. I want to be able to have everyone follow along with some of the red lines that are in my book. So then I can introduce those ideas to us at that time. It's also gonna tie into earth removal a little bit, based off of Ms. Sharkey's comment and, and Mr. Marks's comment about how we can use a subdivision, a modification in our subdivision regulations might call for an exemption to the earth removal permit if we can govern it within the subdivision regulations, giving you the one-stop shop for the subdivision. So, a couple of things there, and, and I have a very red set of subdivision regs and a lot of ideas to introduce, but I wanted us to be able to all follow along at the same time, so.
Can we include the road width in that?
That's absolutely on there. So. Yeah, so I didn't want to do all that tonight unless everyone had a copy, so. I will make sure we get seemingly five of those, but if you already have, if you already have one, just let me know.
Okay. Moving along, Ongoing Development. What do we got for news and updates?
What we have is, we have an update, an update I believe I already told this board, but we actually got the letter from our, our engineer. So, I'll try to keep this short, but everyone's aware of what this is, right? This is Shore Road and the solar project above it, right? In 2021, there was some washouts that took place down below, could have been from the solar array, we weren't sure. We hired a consultant to review the stormwater infrastructure, and we found some changes needed to be made. So we went, the solar developer over the summer made the changes. There was a site walk September seventh to confirm those changes, and unfortunately, it's just, this letter kind of got lost in the mix that we were waiting for with the consultant, and he issued it on November twenty-third. Didn't see any issues with the changes, all of the modifications that they asked for were done. The only note on here is that I felt that the vegetative cover under the solar arrays themselves has been improved, but could be thicker. But the storm system itself, even with some of the lack thereof growth under the arrays, we had a significant storm event on September sixth, where we got about seven inches of rain in twenty-four hours, if you recall. And we were out there the next day with this consultant looking at the site, and you could see the high water marks on, on the outlet control structures and on the hill of the stormwater basin anyway, but it seemed to function as well as it could have, or better than it ever has. So, we're very satisfied with that, and we feel that over time with the growing season that, that it's just going to get thicker under the arrays anyway, so.
It's gonna slow down.
Yeah, and they, the developers have to meet certain requirements under stormwater pollution prevention, obviously, and they feel they've met the seventy percent cover that they're required to have, but I think it would just be in our best interest just to keep an eye on that cover, make sure it takes. But just to report to now for the update is that the stormwater system is designed as it should be. So that's, that's, that's the general update, I guess.
I have one question.
Hold on one second, Tracy.
On the photo three, where they added the blocks and the mortar and the joints like that. Who's gonna be responsible, because, I mean, I'm no mason, but that mortar starts to fall apart, is that towns, gonna be the town's responsibility? That'll be for the life of the project?
Yes, so long, if this were to fail, it's a responsibility of the solar company to repair, but we would obviously monitor, or at least Building Commissioner.
Okay.
On site would be responsible for that.
That's why, I don't know if this was gonna be coming back onto the town or what.
Through the Chair, this mortar on, the picture on the right, you're talking about, top, top right one, right?
Yeah, number three.
That's just a poorly mortared, not washed, usually they'll mortar it, and then they'll wash it so you can see clean lines. So it looks more, you know, intangible as it is right now, you know, on this picture, so I'm sure it'll be all right.
That's correct. It looks worse than the photo.
Way worse, way. It wasn't dressed right or finished right, so.
Ms. Sharkey?
I'm just confirming the summary from the peer review that the stormwater is functioning as designed on this location.
That was the finding, yes.
That was the finding.
Seems that way.
That was the finding, yes.
Yes. Through the Chair, that was the whole purpose of doing this, is to make sure that we got that, to eliminate that as one of the options for some of the issues that are on Shore Road here, so.
Yeah, great. All right, I just wanted to make sure.
Glad to see that the modifications and changes are positive results. Any other updates?
I have one other item, it's just a correspondence under six D.
Under?
It's...
About the land sale?
Well, there's, there's no action here for us, this is just correspondence that made sure that the planning board got the letter. Someone, Ms. Pepka on Walnut Street is, is looking to sell some land that's in chapter and has to notify the town per other requirements of first right of refusal. But this letter, insufficient information was actually provided to us, so the Select Board just recently sent out a letter asking them to submit all of the information that's required as part of that process, so.
Through the Chair, is really, I was supposed to take an action on right of first refusal. But we don't have all the information yet?
Correct.
So they only have purchases and sales on one parcel?
So, through the Chair, if I may, the, what would be actual sheet number three, there is a layout of houses? Is that, I mean, that's obviously something proposed, that they're using some planning, to do, it's nothing to do with anything right now. Right now, it's just raw land and, and a conservation, I mean, a restricted...
That's right.
Use, yeah.
This is an A and R that we endorsed back in March. But just has to go through the right steps, so it's just an FYI for us, we're, we're all aware of it. And that, I believe, is all I have for this evening.
Through the Chair, last planning board brought up about ninety-three Davis.
Ninety-three Davis, yes. I, I talked to Town Council about this, as, as I was asked to do. Town Council says if the board wishes, the board can ask the Building Commissioner to enforce a request of the board. That's, that is it. So it's not an action we take, it's something we could ask the Commissioner to do. Require a full vote of the board for any sort of action that you propose. I did mention about the bond, obviously not having a bond, and wondering what our action is and what we could do. So if we're asking for enforcement, would we be asking for the Commissioner to cease operation of a functioning? I just, we're, we're a little handcuffed, unfortunately.
I stalked down there this week and spoke to her, and she's, her previous engineer is no longer working for her, she's hired a new engineer who's coming up with this, who's developing a set of plans for the engineering for the parking lot and the drive-through or whatever else they want to do down there, so, in my opinion, wait till we see the new plans, just go from there.
I'm just curious how long we're gonna be waiting to see those? You know, it just...
I mean...
Well, you cease and desist, they no longer have income, they no longer can do the jo, you know, it's like, you gotta work with them. There's no justification for cease and desist of a business because of this issue. It's an ongoing issue, and I'd like to see it resolved, but I, I, there's no way I would support a cease and desist on a business because they haven't got the top coat on their parking lot yet, especially when there's planning to do further development on the project. That's just my opinion. In a matter of a couple of weeks, there'll be a top coat on there, white.
For year two, or year three.
You're not wrong, but I think, it's a business, it's one of ours. We don't have a lot of them, so, I mean, it is what it is. I say we wait and see what the new, what the new engineer has to offer and what the plan is, and then we'll take it up again then.
I mean, if I can, through the Chair, I think in the future, I don't care what the project is, we have a bond until every single item is done.
I think we all agree with you, Mike.
Period. So this never, ever, ever happened again in the town of Douglas. Because in reality, this is a joke.
Through the Chair, can I ask that Mister Benoit maybe be, we instruct him to send a letter of affirmation that we understand and we, you know, are glad that she is hiring a new engineer, just put it on notice in writing, and that we are legally awaiting results from that. I mean, I think it's, that Mike, at least if that's a response, that we have acknowledged this is a board, and that why, that's why that letter has gone to her, just as, you know, acknowledging the fact that she has indicated that she's getting a new engineer, and we're looking forward to that. You know, it's just put something in writing.
Also indicating, if I can, state ignoring terms that were agreed upon at the planning board meetings.
Right, or remind her, remind her of those in that letter, you know.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion on that.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Sokrat. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, roll call vote.
Just to send a letter, just a roll call, that's all. There's no action in that.
Yeah, no action, yeah. Ernie Marks, aye.
Aaron Sokrat, aye.
Meg Schlesman, aye.
Mike Croco, aye.
Mike Swicker, aye.
Tracy Sharkey.
Well, I think she said abstain.
You broke up Tracy abstain.
All right. Meeting minutes. We have one in our packet from October thirteen.
Oh, we're getting closer.
I think they're new.
Yes.
I haven't seen them before, so this must be the first time.
Do you get the emails at all?
No, it's here, in the packet.
No, I meant prior, we got the emails last week, so, whatever. I didn't do it either, so, one second.
Hold off on the, um, minutes.
Yep, we got it now.
Anything else?
No, just wanted to wish everyone happy holidays.
What's the next meeting?
Happy New Year.
What's the next meeting?
Oh, I forgot.
Next meeting I have ran down here is Thursday, January eighth, if that makes Next meeting I have written down here is Thursday, January 8th, if that makes sense, and it is a, I have an open agenda.
What do you say, 12?
Sorry, 12.
Says 12 on here.
January 12th, is that?
Oh.
Next meeting.
12. Thursday, January 12th.
Merry Christmas, Tracy, Happy New Year.
Can we move to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Greco, to adjourn.
Erin Marx, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Meg Schlesman, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Swicker, aye.
We have plans to sign?